Well, we're going to call the meeting to order at 7:42. If you could please join us for the if you could please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I should have made the announcement that in accordance with the open meeting law, the Board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM, may be recorded by other local media, and it is being recorded via Zoom. We have a high-grade meeting this evening, so the town is also recording it via Zoom. And we're going to jump right to recognizing, we're actually joined by our esteemed Senator Bruce Tar, and we're joined by our esteemed director who's leaving us unfortunate. So we're going to jump right to recognizing Mary Preney, who we all know and love. So welcome, it seems like you brought a
My family.
lovely group of people with you, and we're probably joined by people that want to participate. So let's kick this off. Mr. Gilbert, do you want to do us a summary of all that Mary has done for the town?
Well, I don't know if we have enough time for that. That's why I said summary.
I will, I will do my best to summarize, but you are right. Mary's service to the town has been extensive. For those who may not know, Mary is currently the Director of Elder Services and also the Director of our Senior Center up at the Third Meeting House. She has been the Director for 17 years. I don't have my notes in front of me, Mary, I'm sorry. 17 years as Director and 21 years working for the town?
As Assistant Director, yeah.
Including her tenure as Assistant Director with Mrs. O'Leary, I believe in the mid-19, the early 2000s, correct? So her tenure with the Council on Aging, working for the town is lengthy. She also is a elected, or was, until recently, an elected member of the Housing Authority as well, an active member of our Community Impact Team, I believe in the very beginning, although it certainly predates my time here, but she's been a regular participant within the Community Impact Team as well as the, its subgroups and its many, many programs as well. So she's also been, I think, a very vocal and active member of our department head corps as well, always willing to sort of share the perspective, to remind us to keep in mind the perspective of our seniors when sometimes maybe we're not giving that consideration in our decision-making, and something I've always really valued, you know, that Mary's brought to the table. She also was a big part of us trying to sort of have our human services work a little more closely together over the past few years, including the Veterans Agency Services Director. And COVID disrupted that a little bit, but in some ways made the work even that much more important. So onto Zoom we all went and phone calls, et cetera. And she's been a huge, huge part of that, trying to grow that group. I'll also just note, you know, she's been a regular contributor facilitator for the annual Thanksgiving Dinner with Senator Tar, Representative Jones, Senator Tar being here this evening, as well as countless other volunteer things that she's done above and beyond the Director's role for Elder Services that I'm sure that other Board members could probably name a handful themselves. So I'm happy for Mary that she's, you know, able to retire and that, you know, that she has, you know, got willing to maintain her health. It's sad for us and for our community. Mary has been such an advocate and such an important part of the fabric of our senior community and having us understand what that means. We'll struggle to find somebody to come and continue that work, but we will try to do so. And I guess I just want to thank Mary for her, for her service. I want to recognize Brad, who's there, who is often there to help in the hours outside of the workday and Mary's regular work that she has to do as Elder Services Director. He's always there to help. So you both have contributed so much to our community. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Chair.
Ms. Mary, would you like to hear from us, or would you like to speak? Because I can see that you have something to say.
Oh, it's just, believe it or not, very brief.
Do you mind coming up to the table where the microphone is? So we can hear you?
Now, I'll wait.
All right, okay.
Mary, Mary likes to get the last word. This will never change. Mary likes to get the last word.
Mr. O'Leary, you're up.
All right. It's my pleasure to be up, and it's my pleasure to, to see that Mary and Brad are, as they both say, going on a new adventure. But again, the town is suffering, going to be suffering a significant loss with Mary's departure. I know for a fact that this is not a Monday through Friday, you know, nine to five, never has been, never was going to be, never would be. And it's, I have witnessed firsthand that it's seven days a week, 24 hours a day. For many of you that do know, but for those that don't know, Mary and Brad have been suing my next one here before. Well, we've been there 34, you've been there 44 years, so for us, this is a big move too. But at the same time, I also know and have witnessed, as I said, she's getting calls 10 o'clock at night, 2 o'clock in the morning, Sunday mornings, Saturday afternoons. And always quick response, always there to assist in those calls that were made for people who were not calling to say hello and how you're doing today, but because they're in need. And Mary has always been quick and effectively responding to people's needs in this community for 21, 22 years here. And she had, I don't know what to call it, a pleasure, or the experience of working with my mother, which is definitely an experience. I grew up with my mother, so, and I love my mother. But my mother was an experience. And Mary has experienced it, survived the experience, and survived extremely well to the point where she actually, you know, took over the job. And it wasn't an easy job to take over at the time, and it wasn't an easy job to carry on for another 17 or 18 years, and she's done a fantastic job. You know, and she's done it in a passionate way. She's immersed herself in it, she's been a strong advocate, she's been extremely compassionate, you know, and as a result, has earned the respect and affection of this community, not just the elder in the community, but the community as a whole. Because people have come to realize that she's been such an integral part of the community in order to deliver the services that have been necessary, and sometimes to expand beyond the services and our capabilities as a community, you know, where she actually served as President of Mystic Valley Elder Services and been able to reach out to other areas and other agencies in order to help single individual people within the community as well as the elder community as a whole. So, you know, I think all of us try and do our best and hope to leave our community a better place than we found it. And I can honestly say, Mary, you've done that. And, you know, we're going to miss you, but we know you're not out of our lives, for sure. Just 20 minutes down the road when there's no traffic. But, you know, for Sue and I, you know, we love you. And as we look next door, the lights are going on, but they're not as bright.
This is why I should have went first.
So, thank you for your service. We look forward to you continuing to be around a lot. And we also know that this is not done alone, Mary alone, because, you know, with all those calls and all those times, Mr. Handyman Brad had to answer the calls too. You know, when the fuses went out in people's homes, or furniture needed to be replaced, things needed to be fixed. Senior's called, he responded. So we're fortunate, you left the place a better place than you found it, and you've earned the respect and affection of the community as a whole. Next?
All right. Mr. Wallen, that's a tough act to fall.
We should, I was just going to say, we should let him go last next time. Anyways, I've known Mary, I've known Kathleen through our daughters, right? So we've known each other for decades now, safe to say. And I jumped into town voluntarily through Mary, because I knew Mary and I knew that she was looking for people on the Board, and that was about 10, 11 years ago. And that's how I became aware of senior issues and all the things that were going on. Mary and I have, I've been on the Board for a number of years, got to see firsthand what's going on at the Senior Center. We did the CIT, I started the SSAT together, that was our, our big start. And she was involved in doing all of the other, well, subcommittees we did after that. So it's really because of Mary I became aware of the issues. And it's Mary who would speak up at times I would never expect her to speak up, and she would speak up openly, even just recently, to express what seniors were really thinking. It would always take me back and say, how well you could articulate that and speak out. So it'll be a huge loss not to have Mary around. We're going to do our best to try to pick up where you left off. Hopefully you'll be proud of us, you know, see what's going on. But, you know, there's been many people, everybody knows you, anybody who's a senior knows you, anybody who isn't a senior knows you, and when you speak, people have respect for everything you have to say. And that's, that's very impressive. So going to miss you. I'm glad you're going to be down in the Boston area, now we don't have a place to park when we want to go there. And I'm glad to see you all here together. It's nice to see Kathleen and everybody here together to celebrate. So thank you so much, Mary. Thanks for the opportunity. Going to be a little served with you.
Thank you. Yes, that's true, though.
So I've known Mrs. Preney the least, better this year. And I've enjoyed the opportunity to, because I don't think a lot of people my age who have moved in the last decade in North Reading get to meet a lot of people that are, especially for, you know, other services, right? I mean, unless you have a parent in it, it's not like it's the first thing you've heard about. So, but what I noticed is, even though I later came to find out that this was going to be her last year, you could never tell with some of the things, the brief things we worked on together with some of the calls and planning. It was, it sounded like somebody who was going to be here for the entirety of a project we were talking about that's going to take years. So that, that just shows that usually on the way out, it's kind of like those last three days before New Year's in the office, everybody's there but not really doing anything. And that wasn't the case with Mrs. Preney. I mean, from, you know, it's like, it was almost like, wow, I didn't know she was about to retire. It shouldn't have, it shouldn't have sounded like that on that call. I mean, she was really passionate about it, so I can see how it's going to be a loss. It's very difficult to replace those that have been doing something for a decade so well. And also, I did not know that at 2:00 AM answering calls, but it doesn't surprise me hearing it. So wish you the best of luck. You know, maybe once we get sewer and get as many restaurants as we'll be able to walk to when you move to Boston, maybe you'll move back. So, but other than that, you know, congratulations on your retirement, and I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez? So Mary and I have sat on the Housing Authority together. That's how I got to know Mary. I think I've been there five years, unbelievably. How long were you on there, Mary?
16 years.
16 years. So she was our knowledge. No matter what we talked about, we could refer to Mary to what has happened over the years there. And the thing about Mary that I found out very early on is when we were talking business, she always brought it back to the people, to the residents, to the people that live there. And let's not forget how that's going to make them feel, and let's remember them always, always, always. That's where her mind was at, how it would affect them. And I'm hoping that we'll always refer to that and have Mary in our head when we're making any kind of decision. So it's been more than a pleasure to have, to know you and sat on that board with you, Mary. And I wish you all of, all the happiness in the world, and so nice to see your family here.
Thank you.
It's a great loss. The residents are going to miss you. You have such a bond with them, and they, they all know you and love you, so, well, maybe not all of them.
Most of them.
So thank you, and we will miss you.
Yeah, if I could describe Mary, I'm going to echo a lot of this, what was already said. But I would say Mary, Mary, the two things that strike me about Mary is her tenacity and her compassion. And that, you know, there was a force to be reckoned with bringing a lot of these age-friendly initiatives to our attention, in our faces repeatedly. Even during budgets, all of the things that you focused in on were, you know, age-friendly initiatives and bringing this to the forefront for us and always reminding, reminding us of elderly issues. And Mrs. Gonzalez is right, some, some of the people who you served for the town, you really were their only connection to the town in a lot of the things that you did for them. And that's so appreciated, and that's, you know, a significant loss, not just for the town, but it's a significant loss for that vulnerable population that you've been serving for so long. You're their friend, and that says a lot about the way in which you ministered to the elderly population with such compassion. And I also think that by that example in your department, I feel like you've helped curate or at least shape a staff that's able to execute its function the same way. And that is kind of invaluable impact that you're going to have moving forward, even though you're not going to be with us. Your staff is so friendly, so caring, so compassionate to the population that they serve. And the other thing about Mary is, it wasn't just elder events. We saw her at all events for the town, so just really dedicated in terms of your, dedicated in terms of your drive for doing things for everyone in the town. So it's going to be a pretty big loss for us. We wish you the best, though, and, you know, like Mr. O'Leary said, in this new adventure to the both of you and to your family, we probably get, hopefully, to see, to see you a lot more than they have, because you devoted so much of your time and attention to the elderly in our town. So we thank you so much for your service. We do have a plaque that we have, and we want to, I'll read it to you, and then we'll take, we'll, we'll hear from our dignitaries too, but this, and then we'll hear from you too, that this is presented to Mary Preney in recognition of her 21 years of dedicated service to the Town of North Reading Elder Services Department, including 17 years as Director, given by the Select Board on behalf of a grateful community, December 202021. And we'll, we'll hand you that and maybe do some pictures later, but if we could call our dignitaries up to speak, that would be wonderful. So thank you for your service, Mary. Wherever you're comfortable with.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and to the members of the Board. I have to say that it's always good to be in North Reading, but particularly nice when I get referred to as a dignitary. So you complain on seeing me at every Select Board meeting after this. It's, it's always great to be with all of you, and it's always great to think about how special this community is because of the people that make it special. And if there is any person that could ever be considered sort of the consummate member of the team, it is Mary Preney. And one thing that I do want to say is that my legislative partner and friend, Representative Brad Jones, could not be with us tonight. It's a busy time of year, there were some scheduling issues, but he very much wanted to join in recognizing Mary for all of your efforts. And it's very interesting, because North Reading has a great history of caring for its seniors. And a big part of that history was the incredible Edie O'Leary. And Brad and I had the wonderful opportunity to work with Edie over so many years and to see her really set the pace for what it means to be a good champion for seniors in this community. And when Edie departed, we thought about what the succession of leadership is going to be. And Mary picked up that baton and has run with it at an incredible pace. And it is true that Mary has been someone who has been first and foremost a part of the community, but always reminded us that seniors were a critical part of that community and could never be forgotten in any discussion, in any way, at any time. But she also made us understand that our senior community is part of the overall community, and we all need to work together, we all need to support each other. And it's that sense of interdependence that I think has been really important about the way that she has approached the role of being the Director of Elder Services. And of course, when you assume that role, you really assume responsibility, really, as has been mentioned several times, for the welfare of our seniors in an almost 24/7 kind of a way. And Mary has done that, whether it be with the day-to-day needs that they have, whether it be nutrition, or education, or healthcare, or ensuring that someone does have a good meal, or an assistive device, or a ride to get to an appointment. Those day-to-day things are the things that add up to an incredible difference for the people in our community who are a bit older than the rest of us. And she's done that. But all the while that she's done that, she's also never lost sight of the big picture, the 30,000-foot view about where we should be going with regard to policy and where we should be going in terms of our support services so that we continue to be innovative and don't accept the status quo. And all of you know, Mary is not one to accept the status quo. And she has been a powerful advocate. And you use the terms, Mrs. Manipelli, about tenacity and caring and compassion. And those two qualities really epitomize, Mary, how you approach things. You're always cheerful, you're diplomatic, but you're always forceful. And we know that when you are championing an issue, there is no retreat, there is no step back, there is only forward progress. And we've seen that in so many ways in this community. And we have seen it not only in your role at the Council on Aging, but also with the Housing Authority, also with Mystic Valley Elder Services, because whenever our senior community has needed you, you've been there. And Brad, whenever Mary has needed you, you've been there.
Yes.
And that's why it's wonderful to see the entire family here to celebrate, or other members of the family, to be able to celebrate the legacy that Mary has built. A legacy of integrity, a legacy of caring and compassion, a legacy of innovation, a legacy of being truly influential in the life of the community. Now, there, it is true that Representative Jones and I, we do get calls almost at all hours of the day and night from Mary. And when they're in the legislative delegation, you know that Mary is a force to be reckoned with, whether it's for the Council on Aging Formula Grant, or whether it be for other kinds of supports. Mary has not only thought about what it means to make a difference locally in North Reading, she's thought about what it means to make a difference for seniors all across the state. And I would not be lying if I, I wouldn't, if I didn't say that, you know, when you get that call, sometimes you see it coming in, and you take a deep breath for a minute. And you say, okay, what's coming next? But what's coming next is always something that comes from the heart, always something that will make a difference for seniors, and always something that's been well thought out and well reasoned. And that has been Mary Preney's service. And also, we've enjoyed the other times that we've had with you doing senior meals, which we've had to adapt to a little bit for Thanksgiving, and Mary was right out there with us, risking her own safety, being standing very close to the line of cars as they drove by and we put food into the vehicles. Mary didn't back up. She pushed me a little closer a couple times, but she didn't back up. And that's because Mary's never backed down. She's always gone forward. And she's always gone forward with her heart and with her mind, and the community is the better off for her. We're all the better off for it. So it's an honor to be able to come again on behalf of Brad and myself to recognize you tonight. And I want to thank the Board and the Administrator for taking this time and giving us the opportunity to be able to all thank you, Mary. And I would tell you that, you know, we have looked at your new address in Boston, and we have a little bit of trepidation, because it's within walking distance of the State House. And so now, when the State House reopens, it may not be a phone call, and maybe you're knocking the door. And so we're already, I've already started measuring space, Mary, to see if we might be able to fit a desk in our office, so that you can have a place to work from. And that would be a welcome thing, but both Brad and I do not only want to thank you for your friendship and your partnership, but we also want to wish you well as you do write these new chapters in your lives, and as you explore Boston and all the things that it holds. But I know that you'll always remember that, Boston is an exciting place. North Reading is a special place, and one that we hope you will always return to and always know how welcome you are and how much we care about you because of the way that you care about us. So congratulations and thank you for everything. And just one last thing, I do want to mention Dick Karn is here from our office, and we have two liaisons from our office to the senior community, Dick Karn and Mary Anne Nae. Mary Anne's feeling a little bit under the weather, but both of them, I know, would want me to express their gratitude and their thanks as well, because you have partnered with them, and we have truly appreciated the way that you've worked with our staff and the way that that partnership has endured through so many things. So thank you, congratulations. We really appreciate you. I do have citations. I know that you have a beautiful plaque that is coming from the Board. We have some additional things. Brad, I don't know how big the new space is, but, you know.
We don't have a lot of space.
Okay, I was going to say, maybe you might want to start thinking about some more. But Brad has a citation from the House of Representatives that he will get to you when he has the opportunity to do that. I have one from all of my colleagues and myself in the Senate, and it reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Mary Preney, Director of Elder Services for the Town of North Reading, in recognition of your many years of dedicated service, not only to the residents of North Reading, but also your commitment to the 11 communities serviced by Mystic Valley Elder Services. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to when a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate." And this is signed by our Senate President Karen Spilka. It's attested to by our Clerk Michael Hurley, and I'm proud to offer it. And we actually dated it for the actual day of your retirement, because we didn't want to see you leave a day sooner than you are. So it's dated for January 4th of 2022. Probably the first citation I will give, the last one of this year and the first one of the new year. But also, I have another citation, again, that Brad and I were talking with the Governor, and he said, "Mary Preney can't be leaving." But we do have this from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to Mary Preney, the Director of Elder Services of the Town of North Reading. And it reads, "On behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I'm pleased to confer upon you this Governor's Citation in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the Town of North Reading and the 11 communities that are serviced by Mystic Valley Elder Services." And this is given on the 4th day of January in the year 2022 by Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth, and Karen E. Toledo, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth. And so, Mary, congratulations and thank you. And I just, I want to tell the members of your family how much we appreciate the service that Mary has given to us. We know that's meant she's been away at times and not always with you when she wanted to be. But I also hope that you will remember this night and remember the legacy that you now inherit and that you will carry forward, and just be very, very proud of Mary, because we all are. Congratulations, Mary.
Are you ready, Ms. Mary?
As usual, I usually at Thanksgiving dinner is hate to go after Bruce. I was begged to go before, but I'm happy I was able to listen to all these wonderful, these wonderful things. Actually, it's been an honor, I'll put these on, these may help. It's been an honor. It's been an honor to hold the keys to the most beautiful building in North Reading for all these years. Of course, I must say, it could use a lot of loving, but it is still a beautiful building. And I want to thank you all for such kind words. I want to thank my staff, past and present, especially Sherri and Sue. Sue can't be with us today, she's on her way home, as always, helping a friend come home from Florida, for doing their absolute best in meeting the needs of our older residents, especially through COVID. It's been, needless to say, a very complicated year for all of us. I want to thank my colleagues at Town Hall, past and present, the staff at Mystic Valley Elder Services, and the staff and board members of the North Reading Housing Authority for their friendship and support throughout the years. And believe me, it really, truly does take a village to do this. But most of all, I want to thank my wonderful family for understanding and support. My daughter Kathleen, my granddaughter Anna, Hayden, Elizabeth, and right up there, my daughter Julia, and Tony. She's home right now in New Hampshire. We're waiting for our grandchild to be born in February, so we're very excited about that. And up in the right-hand corner is my sister Claire, half ahead, who's joining us tonight. But especially, I want to thank my amazing husband, you are truly amazing, and I can't wait for a new adventure to begin. I love you all, and I love you all very much. Thank you.
How about if we take a brief recess so we can get some pictures while we have everyone here? Is that okay? While we have our dignitary here. We'll do a brief recess. We'll get a recess.
Can you see us all? Everybody say cheese. Cheese.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You guys want to come up? Do you want to come here?
Oh, let's grab one with the mask on.
Jen, can you take it with the center? Does it pass by?
I'm much better with it on.
Hey, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Want to get a fresh sneeze?
Are you good, Mr. Karen?
There you go.
That's a beautiful face.
Isn't that your proud grandmother?
I'm proud of them, they stayed and waited.
Such patience.
Thank you, dear.
Did the hamburger break?
Thank you, dear.
Is this a different one?
I don't know.
Wouldn't be used.
What do they use?
Is that a mushroom?
I mean, this thing's gotta be like five hundred and a half.
What is this?
Actually, you know what this is?
I know what this is. I used it last night before.
Don't give him a touch.
Where'd you get? We had the real hammer. This thing is like, what, like for the bear?
What does it say on the back?
Do you have a hammer? Two? Right?
Yeah.
I've never seen that either.
Because she doesn't use it.
No, no, she doesn't use it.
By the way, I don't know if that was even heat or cool, but since you turned it off, it got colder in the room.
How's this one? I turned it down.
I have a watch for you.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay.
Right behind the wheel.
Right behind the wheel.
Grabbing that leg around.
Oh, yeah, okay. Put the brake on.
It'll be a while before I get to worry about a daughter and children.
Chilling is more gymnastics.
Dancing.
My colleague is wearing her apparel.
Dance, gymnastics, yeah. Watching gymnastics hurts me. I just watch the maneuvers, and I'm like, I just think about if I even did anything that's my mistake. I have a pain that I would be in.
We can't balance things.
What's that?
I haven't recognized you to record.
Oh, no, 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 I mean, because you're not...
Watch for a while.
On that, on that?
Either way.
Whatever was prompted or that thing, a valid connection.
Hey, Phil? Phil?
Maybe I can make...
The mic, does it stay there as it goes away?
Next time I make feel, maybe I can go with the ceiling or brush.
Put the imprint in it.
Is there something I should be doing? I don't know. Okay. Yeah, I get my key out of what? I don't know. At least I can...
The town clerk is gonna be speaking. She's sitting at your home. Sorry, I just don't know how to fix it. That's just video.
Michael, you don't have audio? Michael, you don't have audio?
We have audio, but this feed is not going to DoorCam for some reason, which I think previously it has.
Yeah, that's weird.
I wonder if I have time to see that. Probably.
A little service.
Jen? I know. You're usually like a camera. I know, but I had so much to say today.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Usually I'm like, oh my God, does she have a... Like, I wish she took a recess. No, you should tell me. You can always go.
Phil, if you're not hearing the audio from... You're not hearing audio from the Zoom?
I have the audio.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna do. You gotta pay attention. Because I'm not, I had about seven gallons of water.
Brady screwed me good last night. Yahoo?
My apparatus.
You know, fantasy playoffs? I had him for nine games.
I do, I do fly.
And they've been averaging like 70 points.
What's that?
Oh, goodness.
Oh, yeah, it got really cold in here.
We gotta go back to when Rashid Caldwell was a receiver. And they might as well have had me in there.
Are we talking football?
We are.
It'll only be Barbara. This is too pageant, Jen. Well, just repeat. It's not a huge consequence, and we can repeat what she said.
Just give public comment, by the way.
I'm gonna go back to...
Madam Chair.
Because Senator Tar was here.
I understand.
Yeah, I didn't want to, you know, and Mary's whole family was here.
What do you want to shorten the beat?
Kids.
Yeah, and the kids, and it's, yes, yeah. We're the only, you know.
You had the right...
Just, you know.
Madam Chair, when we reconvene, I just want to make reference to the staff at the Senior Center. Sherri's agreed to stay just for a moment, if that's okay.
I'm waiting for you to tell me when it's good to go.
I think we have to be good to go at this point, because I don't know what needs to be corrected is gonna be corrected. So we'll make do.
Okay.
We're good.
All right, all right, let's reconvene at...
On, off, off, on.
8:24, right, Mr. Studo?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
We are gonna go to public comment. Oh, no, excuse me, let me just turn it to you, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I didn't have the opportunity when Mrs. Preney was here. But I do just want to let the community know that, you know, we are in two capable hands, and Sherri Greer and Susan Tilton, who are both employees up at the Senior Center, and individuals who are very familiar to our senior community. You know, they've agreed to, and are willing to keep things going up there, continuing providing services, to be clear. They are open up there. I know there's an impression that they're not. They are open. They have been, to the extent possible, honoring, offering congregant meal service, and some programming as well in person. And they will, they've agreed to continue doing so to the extent possible, as conditions allow. And as we've had some discussion with the strategic, in the strategic planning meeting, you'll be looking to what the model will be for providing human services, including elder services in the future, very soon. So I just want to let folks know, you know, to those who visit the Senior Center, Sherri's is a familiar face, as is Susan. Susan's is traveling tonight, she would have otherwise been here as well. And she actually was trying to get on the Zoom, I think, but then the time just didn't work out. But I just want to let folks know that. Don't hesitate to reach out with regard to whatever your needs might be.
We get to know them during the Thanksgiving stuff, so that's always... They make that fun for us.
I've known her forever.
Forever. No, that's great. We appreciate that. I don't know if anyone else has questions, or does anyone have questions? Are we good?
More to come in the future with regard to this in the near future, but I'm confident that we're in good hands. So thank you, Sherri, and thank you, Susan, for your willingness to step up.
My pleasure. I have big shoes to fill, but I can handle it.
You had that big shoe when you left.
Yeah.
Sherri's available, she's around, and she can't get away very quickly.
Yeah.
She's laid up here. I hope you heal quickly, heal well.
I promise.
Although she does have that scooter, though.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sherri. Thank you, Joe.
All right, so now let's turn it over to public comment. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak, please step forward. Hearing from no one, let's go to the next item, which is the Northeast Regional Vocational School District School Building Project. And we had in our packet the information on a special district election on January 25th, 2022, and we need to vote to affirm St. Teresa's as the polling location for that special election that's to be held. Anything else on that, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, I believe you've adequately summarized it. The town clerk is here to answer any questions. The polls will be open from 11 to 6. Madam Town Clerk, is that correct?
It's correct.
And polling location is proposed, subject to the vote of the board, to be St. Teresa's, which is our regular polling location for all four precincts. This is a special district election. The other member communities will be voting at the same time, and this is to consider the apportionment of debt for a Massachusetts School Building Authority project to construct a new Northeast Regional Vocational School at the site in Wakefield, the same project that was considered and approved at town meeting in October.
And the amount of the construction, is there a final figure that people will be voting to approve?
I believe it was $317 million, that that was the number that was contemplated at the town meeting. I can check that to confirm, and I am not aware that that number has changed.
And our portion, North Reading's portion of the contribution, we did talk about this prior to town meeting.
We did, yes.
North Reading's contribution towards that is, you estimated approximately $300,000 per year for the next 30 years.
Roughly, yes, Madam Chair.
So that our portion is based on our enrollment, our number of students enrolled, which was, we're not at full slot for enrollment there, but we do have a high number of students enrolled, and our portion of that cost is related to the number that our percentage, which I think you said was 9%.
That sounds correct, Madam Chair. My computer's not showing me my information.
So just to be alerting people to what they would be voting in favor or against would be to allow the construction to proceed at that cost, and also then that has the consequence of us having to contribute $300,000 per year towards that debt for the next 30 years. Okay, any other comment or question?
Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Leary.
I think it's important for the public to understand why we're at this juncture. I mean, if you recall, we put a warrant article for consideration at town meeting, which, by the way, passed unanimously in support of meeting the needs of Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical High School, which we're a member. And obviously, the school is a tremendous need, and this community came out unanimously, supported it at town meeting. There were just two communities out of the 13 that did not have a favorable vote of support as we did. So two out of the 13, which forced the Vocational School Committee into the situation where they have to fund an election throughout the district, district-wide, to have an affirmative vote. What's important to understand is, it's a simple majority vote of those members of communities. So every voter here in North Reading has an equal vote as do the people in, excuse me, Revere, or Saugus, or Chelsea, or other places. So it's important that the people in North Reading participate in this special election, hopefully have a high turnout and go out and support this initiative, because the need is great. You have over 600 students that are on a waiting list at that school right now. This will cut this down substantially. The school is antiquated, the school does not meet the needs of our vocational education, the needs of the students here in North Reading and across the district. So I was dumbfounded when I found that two of the communities didn't support it initially, it was forcing them to go to this methodology. So I just want to press upon, and call my colleagues to do the same thing, calling everybody in the community here to promote, support this initiative. You know, while we may only represent a little bit less than 10% of the school population there, the need for vocational education in a fine facility is paramount now more than ever. And we have a certain segment of our community that we have to educate and invest in, and this is the investment we can make and should be making. So we'll press upon everybody, you know, put the date down. And again, it's a short version, I forget, was it 11 to 6? 11 to 6. So it's a short day. Just make the effort to get out and support this initiative, and let's help offset the negative vibes that some of these other communities have put forth, which is unfortunate, because this is a good deal, good bargain, that's gonna put together a facility that will serve us and our communities for the next 40 or 50 years. So unfortunately, we're in this situation. I applaud the Vocational School Committee and Mrs. Diamond, you know, who's chairing the building committee, for moving forward, and let's go out and support them.
Mr. Gilberto?
Just to answer your questions, Madam Chair. So it's a $317,422,620 new building construction project, an estimated MSBA, Massical Building Authority reimbursement of $140,851,919. The remaining share would be $176,570,701 for North Reading. Annual debt service payment beginning in 2023 would increase to $271,260 in 2026 for a total of approximately 30 years. And the total amount that North Reading is expected to pay in principal and interest is $8.1 million. Thank you.
Over the 30 years?
Over the 30 years, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Any other comment or question? Mr. Studo?
On the vote, it's kind of each vote counts. It's not that if the majority of North Reading, then North Reading has one vote. It's actually each individual vote.
Each individual vote counts, and it's majority rules.
Do we have any other...
It's not the majority of communities have to support, majority of people present voting have to support, that's it.
Okay. Does any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Madam Town Clerk, have I missed anything?
I think that covered it, Mr. Gilberto. It just required that a local legislative meeting be conducted on the polling locations, and the letter, therefore, and the warrant action will be signed by the school committee. So this is the coming action, we call it open.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to affirm the polling location for all precincts for the January 25th, 2022 special district election to be St. Teresa's Church Hall, 63 Winter Street.
Set it.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further... to allow the construction to proceed at that cost. And, and also then that has the consequence of us having to contribute $300,000 per year towards that debt for the next 30 years. Okay. Any other comment or question? Mr. O'Leary.
I think it's important for the public to understand why we're at this juncture. I mean, if you recall, we put a warrant article for consideration at town meeting, which, by the way, passed unanimously in support of meeting the needs of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational Technical High School, which we're a member. And obviously, the, the school is a tremendous need. And this community came out unanimously, supported it at town meeting. There were just two communities out of the 13 that did not have a favorable vote of support as we did. So two out of the 13, which forced the vocational school committee into the situation where they have to fund an election throughout the district, district wide, to have an affirmative vote. What's important to understand is it's a simple majority vote of those members of the community. So every voter here in North Reading has an equal vote as do the people in, excuse me, Revere or Saugus or Chelsea or other places. So it's important that the people in North Reading participate in this special election. Hopefully have a high turnout and hopefully support this initiative because the need is great. You have over 600 students that are on waiting list at that school right now. This will cut this down substantially. The school is antiquated. The school does not meet the needs of our vocational education, of needs of the students here in North Reading and across the district. So I was dumbfounded when I found that two of the communities didn't support it initially. It was forcing them to go to this, this methodology. So I just want to press upon, call my colleagues to do the same thing. Calling everybody in the community here to promote, support this, this initiative. You know, while we may only represent a little bit less than 10% of the school population there, the need for vocational education and a fine facility is paramount now more than ever. And we have a certain segment of our community that we have to educate and invest in. And this is the investment we can make and should be making. So we'll press upon everybody, you know, put the date down. And again, it's a, it's a short version. I forget, was it 11 to?
11 to 6.
11 to 6. So it's a short day. Just make the effort to get out and support this initiative. And let's help offset the negative vibes that some of these other communities have put forth, which is unfortunate because this is a good deal, good bargain. It's going to put together a facility that will serve us and our communities for the next 40 or 50 years. So unfortunately, we're in this situation. I applaud the Vocational School Committee and Mrs. Diamond, you know, who was chairing the building committee for moving forward. And let's go out and support them.
Mr. Gilberto?
Just to ask, answer your questions, Madam Chair. So it's a $317,422,620 new building construction project. An estimated MSBA, Massical Building Authority reimbursement of $140,851,919. The remaining share would be $176,570,701. For North Reading, annual debt service payment beginning in 2023 would increase to $271,260 in 2026 for a total of approximately 30, of 30 years. And the total town, the, the total amount that North Reading is expected to pay in principal and interest is $8.1 million. Thank you.
Okay. Over the 30 years?
Over the 30 years, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Any other comment or question? Mr. Studo?
On the vote, it's, it's kind of each vote counts. It's not that if the majority of North Reading, then North Reading has one vote. It's actually each individual vote.
Each individual vote counts. It's majority rules.
Do we have any other?
It's not the majority of communities have to support. Majority of people present voting have to support. That's it.
Is there any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Town Clerk, have I missed anything?
I think that covered it, Mr. Gilberto. It just, it actually just requires that a local select board meeting is conducted on the polling locations and the letter, therefore, and the warrant action will be signed by the new teacher school committee. So this is the coming action required openly.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to affirm the polling location for all precincts for the January 25th, 2022 special district election to be St. Teresa's Church Hall, 63 Winter Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for joining us.
Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening and Merry Christmas.
To you too.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Barbara.
Next order of business is review, affirm special municipal employee designations. Mr. Gilberto, there's, there was a list in the packet, but if you could express the need for doing this again and why are we doing it now? These are summer, supposed to be summer positions.
Certainly, Madam Chair, through you, these are positions that we traditionally have struggled to find employees from outside of the town or school workforce. The Human Resources Department conducts an annual review with the request of the board with the previously authorized positions to see if any positions are, are able to be removed from the designation. And in the most recent review, we did not identify any positions that we were comfortable with removing at this point in time. So this vote would allow the special municipal employee designation to continue into calendar year 2022, most notably for a number of seasonal positions that the Parks and Recreation Department will begin advertising for in the coming weeks.
Mr. Studo?
I have a question. I don't see the EDC, which we did. Remember what we did is we could have that event?
Yes, we should add that. Thank you, Mr. Studo.
So do I just say economic development committees like as a whole? I don't have the?
At the end, we say economic development committee member. Good catch. Thank you. Well done, Mr. Studo.
Oh, every squirrel finds a dot once in a while.
Any other question on this? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to reconfirm the vote of December 7, 2020. Designating the following positions as having special municipal employee status pursuant to message of general law, Chapter 268A, Parks and Recreation, Infant Toddler Instructor, After School Instructor, Coach, Summer Program Instructor, Coach, Summer Program Director, Summer Program Assistant Director, Summer Counselor, Police, Magistrate Crossing Guard, Counsel on Aging, Van Driver, Finance Committee Reporting Secretary, Police Department, Co-Facilitators for the Youth Action Team, Library, Substitute Library Technician. And the following position, the following position is voted on February 25th, 2019, Board of Health, Public Health Nurse. And July something that we voted for the EDC.
Economic Development. Economic Development Committee Member would be the position.
For winner of the day.
I'm not sure that the date is necessary.
They needed to spread it a bit too. And Economic Development Committee.
Member.
Members.
Members in July 2021.
Yeah, it can't be for a person. It has to be position related. Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Studo. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? From the chair, I will say I'm concerned that we're just getting into the habit of routinely granting these. And there are a number of people that are looking for work, including seasonal work, like students who are, who may be capable of fulfilling these positions. Some of them of whom have been through the Parks and Rec and been in, you know, training and things like that to be counselors or, or other type of employees. I really do think that we shouldn't be in the habit of just continuing this. Maybe our recruitment efforts should be different. And maybe we should be looking to different available, you know, individuals that can fulfill these on a seasonal basis, like students, like college students, like high school students. So, so that, that's just my thought. Obviously, there's some of these that they can't, they can't fulfill. But, you know, I, I do feel like we should maybe get better at our recruiting of individuals for these positions. Instead of just keeping in this habit of saying, okay, we can't find anyone. So we're just going to, you know, designate a special so we can use someone who's already working for the town. That's just my two cents on the matter. So.
That could be a role for that committee we're talking about.
Amen to that.
Community Engagement Committee.
Absolutely.
Engagement Committee. Just put it down as one of the things in my report.
And this is paid. This would be a paid position for someone. Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I concur with your comments because he has passed. I have been very reluctant to put a special employee status on different positions. For other reasons, exactly what you're stating here. And I don't think we need to get in the habit of just because people did it before, they can do it again. We should be opening it up and looking to engage more people, particularly for these part-time summer jobs. I think you were spot on with your comments and just guidance to the administration. As they search to fill these positions, while these people are eligible, you know, be cognizant, be aware, and be receptive to other applicants.
Okay. Great. Any other comment? All set? Okay. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next order of business is COVID-19 update, which I'll turn over to you, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I put in the meeting packet a copy of our most recent public announcement dated December 10. And it reflected the increase in positive cases that we've seen in North Reading in recent weeks. A trend that continued until last week and the early part of this week. The data that we put in there was dated December 9th, Thursday, December 9th, the regular state reporting date being Thursdays. Excuse me. And so rather than referring to that data, I'll just go over the current state data, which is more accurate. Now at 86.2 cases per 100,000 residents, that's the daily incidence rate. And then for the percent positivity rate for North Reading at 9.82% overall. I think that the, and so that's an increase from 7.7 cases per 100,000 on November 4th and 1.4%, or 1.47% positivity on that same day. So the message at that time that we wanted to put out to people is that there has been an increase in COVID level activity and that, you know, our increases, you know, there are also increases happening at the state level and in the region. And that most of us are following that information. There's been quite a bit of COVID activity. We also wanted to make the community aware that the statewide Community Tracing Collaborative was scheduled to and did close on November 30th, right after Thanksgiving. Shortly thereafter, the State Department of Public Health notified the town of North Reading and all communities that local health departments were advised to no longer prioritize investigating individual positive cases or contact tracing associated with those cases and to instead prioritize vaccinations. We were advised to continue investigating cases at healthcare facilities, large congregate settings, early education and care centers, schools, higher education, which we will continue to do through the public health nurse and through support staff that we have intermittently provided when case activity is required. North Reading Public Schools do continue to conduct school-based contact tracing in accordance with state guidelines. We just wanted to put out there for folks that there is information on the state website. And the state has told us that they will commit to further publicizing that information to provide guidance for folks who do test positive for COVID-19 regarding quarantine and isolation requirements. And that information can be found off of the town website or off the state website as well. We continue to run multiple, to run vaccination clinics. And in this case, it'll be multiple clinics this week in conjunction with the school department and a third-party contractor. We have a clinic open on Wednesday, December 22nd over at Hillview. Last I checked, there were still appointments that were available for that clinic. So we encourage anyone who's looking to be vaccinated or to receive a booster shot to participate. There will also be a school-focused clinic that evening at the Bachelor School. And I believe that there are still appointments available for, for that as well. I believe the clinics that have been scheduled, I think we're up to 35 clinics that we've had. So where some communities have backed away from that, we continue to make it available to the community. Our COVID-19 Working Group, the very group that's been meeting since March of 2020, continues to meet intermittently as needed and more recently every week or two. We met as recently as today to discuss and review the data. There has similarly been an increase in activity in the schools in terms of their, their cases. And they continue to contact trace those cases. Our overall response is, as it has been from the very beginning, to follow the guidance that we're receiving at the state level. And so we felt it was important, when this information was updated from the state, to make it, make it clear to the community because it wasn't necessarily coming up to the community in other avenues. I just want to make folks aware of what to expect moving forward. And we'll continue to monitor the caseload and to make, make any recommendations where appropriate and to act accordingly. So I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Just kind of a summary of the fourth exam.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Any other, any questions on that? Or, oh, Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I've been, as liaison, keeping in communication with the Board of Health at the town meeting last, last week. And you were given, the town administrator pointed out, that positivity rate is now now 9.82%. It's the highest in our region. PowerPoint presentation, which was provided to all the members, you know, with last week's data, you know, we were at 4.42. We're now at 9.82. Wilmington, our comparable communities that we always get reported to us, you know, basically Wilmington, Linfield, North Andover, Andover, Reading, you know, directly touching us. Wilmington's at 8.4, Reading at 7.67, Linfield 7.8, North Andover 5.1, Andover 6.37. Statewide positivity rate is 5.91%. Of course, as of this afternoon today, significantly higher than they were last week with the previous 14 days. Just a few comments that took place and observations from the Board of Health. Meeting again was the, the news from the Department of Public Health and the guidance, as the town administrator pointed out, significant change in focus and attention as far as the contact tracing. They basically just abandoned it in short order. We have put a substantial amount of recent human resources into the contact tracing, which has been extremely effective. But now they're focusing on public messaging and vaccinations, which of course is important. We still are continuing the contact tracing in those areas that the town administrator pointed out, which is still extremely time-consuming and human resource-intensive. What's important to know is that, you know, our staff and people who are doing the contact tracing for us and on behalf of the community in order to keep people safe and inform them wisely and well are being, to say, kindly disrespected and in many cases verbally abused, by members of our community who are somewhat angered by the fact that they're being notified that they may have been in close contact. I think it's important for the public to understand, nobody likes to deliver the message, first of all. But I think it's important that the public understand that it's the value of knowing. Again, some people already know because they've been contacted by people or individuals, but others have not. So in order to keep people safe, you know, we need to keep them informed. And our staff and public health nurses are doing this as a public service and it should be appreciated. I understand people want to somehow or another get out of the line of fire relation of having to quarantine themselves and notify others. But, you know, as unfortunate as that is, our staff and our people and our public nurses do not deserve the treatment that they're getting. So I just want to make the board aware and the public aware in large because the vast majority of people are respectful and are appreciative. But for those small people, the small number of people that are engaging in this behavior, they should be ashamed of themselves. They should rethink their position or they should be appreciative as to the services that are being provided. The other thing that's important to recognize, again, you know, these masks help, but they, you know, they don't stop the virus. The thing that really does assist is vaccination. And that most recent review by DPH found that 99.9% of the breakthrough cases, this is important for the public to understand and my colleagues, among fully vaccinated people under the age of 60, 60, has not resulted in a single death. Among breakthrough cases for residents over 60, 97% have not resulted in death. So no deaths have been reported in breakthrough cases among those under the age of 30. So the review also, the review also found that unvaccinated residents are five times more likely to get infected than fully vaccinated residents. And that unvaccinated residents are 31 times more likely to become infected than fully vaccinated residents will receive the booster. So as the town administrator pointed out, we've run 35 clinics since March. So North Reading is doing their part, trying very hard to, to address the situation here. We ask for people to continue to participate. And we have approximately 70% fully vaccinated here in the community now. And 80% with at least one dose. So we've made significant headway. People are continuing now to come and get vaccinated. And we hope to see a continuation of that. And we hope to see more people coming in and getting the booster shots because that's really what's needed with this latest variant. So again, the numbers are staggering. If we're concerned about mask mandates, if we're concerned about economic impact on our community, there's only so much that we can do here in North Reading. And the Board of Health has been taking a measured approach by following DPH's guidance through this whole pandemic, stayed at the forefront of it, has not necessarily jumped in front of it on some of the initiatives that some of the other communities have done. They would like to continue to follow that guidance, but they are not necessarily going to shy away from the science and the need to address things at the local level if they need to. They have not scheduled a special meeting. The next meeting is, I think, the 12th of, of January. But they will meet again if the numbers continue to get worse and to determine if there's anything that locally needs to be addressed. So we ask people to, particularly people gathering the holidays, people being indoors now more. I just dread it's going to be even worse. It's unbelievable what's happened just in the last week and by the last month. So let's be vigilant. Let's all participate. Let's protect one another. Let's do what we can to assist in beating this thing back and diminish the mortality rate. Again, we're not going to do away with the virus. It's here. It's here for quite a while. We need to do this, do our part individually and do what we can to protect one another at all levels. So again, again, I express on behalf of the board our appreciation for the Board of Health's due diligence and hard work and to our professional staff, Mr. Bracy, and to Pam Bath, who was a member of the Board of Health, but also stepped back into the role of public health nurse because, again, we have been unable to date, to get another public health nurse. We had a short term when there was, Ms. Hovey came for a short while and left. Came retired, came back again. I think this is her third, third go-around with us. So the community really needs to note a high level of appreciation from Pam because I don't know what we would do without her. But I think Mr. Bracy would say the same thing. So they're working overtime, they're working hard, they're monitoring, they're asking for everybody's help and cooperation so that things don't get any worse than they have to. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Yep, they're working, like you said, overtime and some stressful, that's very stressful time calling. So people just need to be kind so that we can all make it through this. There's enough stress going around here that, you know, treat, treat them kindly. They're, they're trying to help.
The other thing, just my colleagues, again, when it comes to budget time, you know, this isn't going away. The resources that it has been sucking out of the department over the last 18 months, almost two years, has been huge. In the meantime, responsibilities haven't changed for the Board of Health. So I would not be surprised, you know, that we are presented with a budget recommendation which would increase some staffing and level of services or hours for positions in order to meet just the day-to-day, week-to-week needs of the Board of Health. We're meeting the responsibilities in addition to what, what COVID has done. So just be aware that there was a conversation, I have a public safety director in relation to that also. So the request will probably be covered.
All right. Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. I'll consider that to be at least part of the board member report.
What's that? Yeah, I'm done with that.
We'll consider that to be found.
That's a double.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments on the update?
I just, I literally just signed up for my booster right now.
Nice.
So I'll see you on.
But wait a minute. Weren't you paying attention to Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, I can do two things the same.
Yeah, I can do two things the same. Yeah.
Well, that's what's wrong now. That's what's wrong now.
You gotta take action.
True. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Thank you for your immediate response. Thank you for listening.
I know, really. All right.
See you at 2:20. 12:22.
Nice. All right. Okay, license, next order of business, license renewals. Do we have...
Madam Chair, I suggest that the one you can't vote on, we'll just do that first.
Let me, let me recuse myself for having a family member that formally works there.
You gotta pass the hammer.
And I passed it. I'll pass it over to Mrs. Gonzalez.
So, we're going to... Okay, do you have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I move to renew the following common particular licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirement. Kylie's coffee DBA having its done this.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Studo. We have a second by Mr. O'Leary. And can we just do all in favor on this? All in favor?
Aye.
One is refused.
And I will pass it back over to the chair.
On, on our next licenses, Mr. Studo, because we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Swaraj LLC, DBA, Subway, McDonald's, Nana Central Cafe, Gary Queen, To the Dogs Restaurant Management, DBA Sports Spirits and Steaks, Grill 19, Yebba Group LLC, DBA, Teresa Prime, Grill 19, Ag Marisans, and DBA Texas.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
I never give anybody discussion.
Yeah. Maybe that's a good thing. I don't know. All right. Next order of business, ABCC renewal certification.
Nope, still got more license.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Hold on.
Mr. Studo. See, I was, I was flipping through to make sure that I, I didn't get to that part.
My signature's getting progressively worse.
Yeah, because I don't know what line you're on. It gets me in trouble.
All right. I didn't say you can blame me. I said I can blame you. Madam Chair, I move to renew the following common particular all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. To the Dogs Restaurant Management, DBA Sports Spirits and Steaks, Grill 19, Yebba Group LLC, DBA, Teresa's Prime Grill 19.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Still more?
Aye. Going to the motion.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following pack and store all alcohol licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. One Stop Liquors Inc.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following pack and stores line, Mall Grabbers license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Smokes and Snacks Inc., DBA Brew 28, Lucky Mart.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device licenses to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. To the Dogs Restaurant Management, DBA Sports Spirits and Steaks.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following Sunday entertainment license to expire December 31, 2022, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Grill 19, Yebba Group LLC, DBA Teresa Prime Grill 19.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous.
Okay, now we're done.
Okay. Our next order of business. No, I, I see our clerk is waving at us. So, we're not done yet.
She just signed this one. Yeah.
Yeah.
But no, we can...
Oh, no.
We can move on. This one, it's just the...
We're gonna move on to the next...
Well, do you want to wait and just send those one, all of them one by one?
Madam Chair.
Let's, let's, let's try to clear up this confusion.
What's the confusion?
I'm not sure.
There is no, no confusion. But Madam Chair, you are the only person who should sign the Sunday entertainment license.
Yeah.
That's all we're trying to do.
That's all I was trying to do.
That's the only difference.
Okay, all right. I, I can, I don't have to sign them now. I was just trying to move on to the next order of business. But I'll check, I will remain here so that you can make sure you have all of our signatures after the meeting, all right? And let's move on to the next order of business.
Okay.
It's an ABCC renewal certification form. Vote to approve and sign. Mr. Gilberto, the basis for this?
Thank you. It's an annual certification of those that have renewed and not renewed. Requires a vote to approve and then your signature or signature for the board.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the ABCC renewal certification form, certification form.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor? Aye. Unanimous. I'm sorry. Did anyone have any comment about that or discussion? The vote stands. Okay. Next order of business, ABCC certification form.
The tenor isn't here, right? Or they're separate?
They're separate.
They're separate. Okay. That's all I did. Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the licensing authority certification form to correct address of the loyal order of Moose.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Gilberto, the basis of this request?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To some, including yourself possibly, I may have relayed that there was a long time error on the license. It's actually not correct. The, the, the address has been correct for a long time. And for some unknown reason, when the license gave back to us from the ABCC, it showed a P.O. box. So, they required that this be corrected, even though we are fairly confident we did not submit it to them with a P.O. box. Nonetheless, a vote was requested, and so we therefore asked for this vote and for the Board to sit in their own accord. The loyal order of Moose, the Lord of Moose has not moved. To dispel any rumors, it's still in the same location on those three.
Okay. Do, we did have a second to that motion, right?
Yeah, we did.
I'm sorry about that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
This one here that I'm sending around, we already voted for this last meeting, yes? We just have to re-sign, correct? So, we already voted. We just need to re-sign.
Yes. Okay. So, now our next order of business is to amend the recycle committee charge to authorize associate members. Before we go to the motion, Mr. Gilberto, how many members are on the recycling committee and how many associate members are proposed?
Madam Chair, through you, I don't know that a, there's a limit proposed on the associate membership of the committee. I will look to the top clerk.
Are you looking that up right now, Mr. Gilberto?
I am, thank you.
And, and the associate members would have, what, voting rights on the committee?
No, they would not.
What are they there for?
I'll defer to the liaison, Madam Chair, but I believe it's an intent to try to expose individuals who are interested in potential future service to the committee.
And could they be called upon by the chair of the committee in the absence of a, a regular member to vote as long as they were there for the business?
That is not my understanding of the intention. No.
Okay.
And to answer your previous question, it's a seven-member committee.
Is, are all seven spots filled right now?
There's one vacancy which I believe is going to be filled along with reappointments later this, this evening.
Yes. In terms of the, this particular vote, I, I guess we can hear from the liaison, but shouldn't we be voting on a specific number of associate members? I, I don't think it makes sense to vote unlimited members.
No, I thought it was, I thought there was a number.
It is, it is three. I might have thought that. Three associate members.
Oh, there's actually three, yeah.
Yeah.
And they would not be able to be called upon to vote in meetings.
They would not be?
They would not be.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any, then else on this agenda item, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Yeah, just so, it came up because there has been a lot of activity, people wanting to be involved. So, in a conversation with the chair and UTA, we felt like it would be a benefit to the committee to have these people as associates so they could still be involved with the committee, not voting, but, but could be involved and would be there when a slot opened to be able to be put in. So, we just thought it would be a benefit to the committee to have them, as a lot of committees do have.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to amend the recycling committee membership by adding three associate members for indefinite terms.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? I'll say from the chair, this is yet another example of the bringing, bringing the youth on board. I think this is a great opportunity to bring some, some younger generation individuals to the table, to this type of service, to get, you know, steeped in what the recycling committee's been dealing with and, you know, have a voice at the table. So, any other comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next order of business, appointments, which we have, I think, not too many, but enough. Mr. Studo.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of following names for reappointment as process service constables for terms to expire in December 31, 2022. There are five openings. Jonathan Fiorello, incumbent. Douglas Lab, incumbent. David Rosati, incumbent.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Gilberto, these are all recommended by the police chief for reappointment?
They have been vetted through the normal appointment process, which includes the police department, yes.
All right. So, this is a name?
And they're all reappointments.
Reappointments, yes. So, this is a roll call name. Well, we still do the analysis with reappointments, so.
You send the, the form for the police department on the, on these guys or no? I mean, I have spoken with the police chief about these candidates. I'm not concerned that there's any, any issue.
There's no issue with the police chief. Okay. So, this is an, a roll call name vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Ferrell, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati.
Mr. Studo.
Mr. Ferrell, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mr. Ferrell, Mr. Lab, Mr. Rosati.
And Manu Pelley is Fiorello, Lab, and Rosati. So, it's unanimously reappointed.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Conservation Commission for terms to expire on December 31, 2024. Two openings. Laurie Michener, if I said that right?
Laurie Michener, yes.
Incumbent. Randall Mason, incumbent. Madam Chair.
Motion, we have a motion and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary, let's hear from you, please.
Hear from me, okay. So, Laurie Michener has been the longtime chair and is seeking reappointment, which we, Stephanie, did tremendous work and rendered service for the community along with Mr. Mason, who was appointed probably, I think, three years ago and served as an associate member prior to. So, recommending that we reappoint both members. There are some vacancies for associate membership, but we're not prepared this evening to, as you have spoken with all the candidates, all the people who put in the citizens activity forms as of yet. So, that's the first of the year we'll be doing it. So, fortunately, as you're all aware, we had some difficulty in filling the conservation position part over the past few years, and that's not the case anymore. So, that's a good thing. So, I recommend Ms. Michener and Mr. Mason.
Mr. O'Leary, how many associate member positions remain open, if you know?
I believe there's going to be two now, one on expired term and then a full associate membership term.
All right. Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? It's a name, it's a roll call name vote. Ms. Mich, Michener and Mr. Mason have been nominated. Mr. O'Leary.
Laurie Michener, Randall Mason.
Mr. Walner.
Laurie Michener, Randall Mason.
Mr. Studo.
Laurie Michener, Randall Mason.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Laurie Michener, Randall Mason.
And Manu Pelley is Michener and Mason. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment to the cultural council for terms to expire in December 31, 2024. There are two openings. Rebecca M. Griffin, Frances Toniguzo.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. Walner. We'll hear from the liaison.
Yep.
Mr. Walner, I'm sorry. We'll hear from the liaison.
These would be two open spots on the committee. The chair and co-chair recommend, and so they're both being, they're being recommended to join the cultural council.
All right. Thank you. We have a, a roll call name vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Rebecca Griffin, Frances Toniguzo.
Mr. Walner.
Rebecca Griffin, Frances Toniguzo.
Mr. Studo.
Rebecca Griffin, Frances Toniguzo.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Rebecca Griffin, Frances Toniguzo.
And Manu Pelley is Griffin and Toniguzo. So, it's a unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following name for reappointment to the historic district commission for terms to expire in December 31, 2024. Two openings. William Berkmeier.
One, one nomination for, for those, there's two openings. Motion and a second by, motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. It seems kind of obvious, but we'll hear from the liaison.
Yeah, no, William's continuing on. So, that's great. I'll just remind, this group did a nice job working with the development. I can't remember who's the developer.
Mr. Wheeler?
Sorry, the Wheeler, the Wheeler property. They did really, I sat in a bunch of meetings and they did a really nice job going back and forth. The developer was very responsive. This group was very proactive and advocating for it, fit in well with the, the district that it's in. They did a nice job making that go forward. That was a smooth development for the town. So, recommend William. And I'll also say they're going to be continuing more people come January than to get more people involved. So, there'll be more additions coming later on.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? We have a motion by Mr. Studo and was seconded by Mr. Walner. Oh, this is roll call vote. Mr. O'Leary.
William Berkmeier.
Mr. Walner.
William Berkmeier.
Mr. Studo.
William Berkmeier.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
William Berkmeier.
And Manu Pelley is Berkmeier. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment, appointment to the veterans event committee for terms to expire in December 31, 2024. There are two openings. Deborah Aldrich, incumbent.
Motion by Mr. Studo.
Just so you say.
Second by Mr. O'Leary. Keeping Mr. O'Leary busy with the seconds here. All right. And we will hear from the liaison.
So, Deborah Aldrich is an incumbent. She's been a, a great addition to the committee. So, we would like to reappoint her. There is another opening and there are citizens activity forms for that. But we've just had a little trouble with timing and talking to the chair and getting that going. a little trouble with timing and talking to the chair and getting that going, so we'll bring that forward in January, but we wanted to get Deborah Aldrich.
All right, we gotta move this on to a vote because Mr. Studo's getting tired over there.
No, 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 I'm always tired, so we, we, it doesn't matter.
All right, so we have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Aldrich, and this is a roll call name vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Deborah Aldrich.
Mr. Walner.
Deborah Aldrich.
Mr. Studo.
Deborah Aldrich.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Deborah Aldrich.
And Manu Pelley is Aldrich. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment to the Recycling Committee for indefinite term, one opening. Nick J. Amato, indefinite.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. We'll hear from the liaison.
Yep, so Nick has actually been on a lot of the meetings, he's, he's always there. So, it was just natural, he put his form in, and we're happy to have him be part of it.
Mr. Mo, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. O'Leary.
Nick J. Amato.
Mr. Walner.
Nick Amato.
Mr. Studo.
Nick J. Amato.
Gonzo, Mrs. Gonzalez.
Nick J. Amato.
And Manu Pelley is Amato. It's unanimous.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment to the Water Commission for terms to expire in December 31st, 2024. One opening, Joseph Simino.
Semino, Semino.
Excuse me, I, I pronounced it the way they wouldn't know. Semino.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. We'll hear from the liaison. Mr. Studo or Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. O'Leary. I'm doing enough talking.
Mr. Semino's been serving on the Water Commission for a number of years and again is wishing to be reappointed and is certainly deserving of our support.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Mr. O'Leary.
Joseph Semino.
Mr. Walner.
Mr. Semino.
Mr. Studo.
Joseph Semino.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Joseph Semino.
And Manu Pelley is Semino.
Madam Chair, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment and appointments of the Youth Services Committee for terms to expire, as noted. Jason Slattery, Slattery, incumbent, December 31st, 2024. Jacob Mullin Bernstein, December 31st, 2024. Beatrice Barton, December 31st, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mrs. Gonzalez, we'll hear from you.
Uh, yep, so Jason Slattery is an incumbent, and we're happy to have him want to stay on. Jacob Mullin Bernstein is a famous name in this town, Rita Mullin's son. So, happy to see him following in his mom's footsteps, wanted to be involved. And Beatrice Barton has joined in a meeting and introduced herself, and so we're happy to have these people appointed.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary.
Jason Slattery, Jacob Mullin Bernstein, Beatrice Barton.
Mr. Walner.
Jason Slattery, Jacob Mullin Bernstein, Beatrice Barton.
Mr. Studo.
Jason Slattery, Jacob Mullin Bernstein, Beatrice Barton.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Jason Slattery, Jacob Mullin Bernstein, and Beatrice Barton.
And Manu Pelley is Slattery, Mullin Bernstein, and Barton. It's unanimous.
Thanks to see another generation stepping up here.
That's right.
Yeah. But I'll just comment, the commission on disabilities, we're down to one member, so that's gonna be major rebuilds to bring that all back up. And so, we'll be working on that, and the tax committee, Mary's no longer on that, Mary Prunty, so that'll also be, we need to reengage that one as well, so...
As far as Mr. Studo and I also have under titles here, the wastewater advisory committee, we're not quite ready yet to build that. I think what we're looking to do is get the project a little further along now that we have a definitive plan moving forward before we form the advisory committee to assist us in reviewing the work that's being done and then hopefully selling the whole thing to the community, you know, in October. So, it'll be later on, probably in the spring, consulting with the administration, and we'll be consulting with the working group as to what roles we really see them playing at this point and how can they assist us. So, until we define the mission a little bit better, we don't want to be appointing people, not sure what we're gonna be doing yet. I concur.
Okay, I'll just, and I'll just briefly, libraries, they are down. They're gonna be interviewing three prospective trustees in January, so we're gonna probably address that in January. The just timing was such that that's, they, at their next meeting, they'll be interviewing the potential replacements. All right, so I think that covers it for appointments, we can move on to the next order of business. Legal bills.
Minutes.
Oh, I'm s...
Please, that's...
I scratched so, I scratched my paper up so much, I skipped over the minutes. Next order of business was minutes. Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, I want to acknowledge and thank you for your efforts to submit meeting minutes and your revisions to the meeting minutes. We've been able to review some, but not all of them. So, if it's okay with you, my suggestion would be that we allow the recording secretary and I to go through them, just add in the remaining bits and pieces of information, and then we'll bring them all to the board to vote on, on January 10th.
Okay, so you do want us to pass over this this evening?
I think if that's okay with you, I know you put a lot of work into it, but...
Sure.
Thank you.
I mean, as long as that's okay with the members and that, and then the members can, will look at them again after they've been finished.
Is there anything we can sign off on or not? Because I...
Honestly, there may be, but it would be a painful exercise, I think, trying to figure that out, I think, at this stage, so my recommendation is, there's a couple things the chair pointed out to me, we spoke, and I think we can get them right there for the next meeting, but I, I'll, I'll spare you the exercise this evening.
Right, right. All right, now legal bills?
Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for September 2021 in the amount of $14,595.29 as follows. General, $8,445.29. Labor, $4776.50. 20L Street, $1373.50, for a total of $14,595.29.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're on to next order of business, which is the Town Administrator's Report.
Madam Chair, through you, just one item to report, where it is holiday weeks, this week and next, just to let the community know. The town hall will be closed on Friday, December 4th, observing the Christmas holiday, and the town hall will close at noon time on Thursday, December 23rd. Same is true for the Flint Memorial Library and for the Edith O'Leary Senior Center. The following week, those buildings will be closed for the day on Friday, December 31st, but will be open in regular hours on Thursday, December 30th. That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right, now we're on to board member reports. Mr. O'Leary.
I already did board a hell. Again, help you again continues to engage with individuals who are interested in getting a license agreement with the function hall facility, and we hope to have that come to some conclusion within the next few weeks, so that's moving forward. And again, the commission is putting in an ordinary amount of work and effort, and greatly appreciated. Other than that, Madam Chair, I'll go to old members too, which is, just basically wish my colleagues and administration and Jen and Phil and Maureen and everyone else who's tuning in in the community, you know, a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year, and may the next year be happy, healthy, and prosperous, forever and ever. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Walner.
Nothing reported this time.
Did, did you want to, did you, was that your new, new business, old and new business too?
That was my old and new too, all at once.
Oh, so I'll just remind, I, I can't be here for more than your old business, I can't be here for a January 24th meeting, which I think everybody's penciled into their book, so...
Did you want to see if we would reschedule that, or have we scheduled that for a purpose?
That was scheduled, no.
We, we scheduled it as part of our regular schedule, but if we want to look at the calendar...
I don't know, do you, is that something you, do you want to be at?
I might be in Barbados, so this time I'm not gonna be.
No, that's right, that's right.
Really? You said a president here.
I know. They mentioned us when we were doing it, but that's...
We, we don't like to, but we'll proceed on without you. How does that, so you can just enjoy yourself there.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine.
Okay, anything else for old and new?
No, thank you. No, every time...
If there's anything you don't want us to act on, you might want to keep it to yourself.
I trust you guys. It's been a good year. It's been a good year for us. It's been a nice, good experience, it seems like.
All right, Mr. Studo.
I will just also say Merry Christmas to everyone. I know it was a, not the way everybody thought we were gonna end the year, especially with all the progress that was being made, but it does seem that, just like most things in life, time is the only thing we got that will, you know, heal and make things better, so everyone have a nice Christmas, safely. Eat and drink too much, because I will, and see everybody in the new year.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Studo. Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah, no, I have nothing to report, and we'll just echo my colleagues for everybody to have a safe and happy holiday and a very happy and prosperous new year.
Okay, and I'll say the same. I hope everyone enjoys peaceful holidays, peaceful, peaceful holidays, safe holidays, and I just want to also thank my colleagues.